For each and every one that is here today, Lord, that either has a petition or support. I thank you, Lord, for the ones that are here that are representing the people of this city, that make it a better place to live and to work. We ask, Lord, for cool heads, we ask for good judgment, but we ask most of all, Lord, that every decision that is made here this evening would be discerned through your grace and your mercy. Be with each and every one of us throughout this process, and then on our way home, Lord, that we can come together and serve you as we serve these citizens in this city. We ask it all in the name of our loving Savior, Jesus Christ, and amen.
Thank you, Pastor James. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Here.
Cleary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Next in our meeting agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 20th, 2023, and the organizational meeting of December 1st, 2023. Are there any errors, edits, admissions, additions? I have one. I discussed with Marty already, organizational meeting, the last paragraph and next to last paragraph says Haney, it should say Harvey, easily confused, I get it. That's a compliment.
I saw that too.
I make a motion to DBA. Read ordinances and resolutions.
Can we start with communication? So moved. Thank you. Mr. Haney has a previous commitment, he has to leave for, but he wanted to be present to vote on legislation like the healthcare insurance, so that could be passed by emergency, FYI. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Communications, if the, we do have a Ohio Department of Taxation memo regarding real estate taxes. John.
Taxes, the water hand property, we have made application for that to become tax exempt, and we received notification on that, that was awarded tax exempt status.
Chris.
Requesting a hearing.
No, that's for liquor. Yeah, accepted.
Except.
Move. Chris. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Thanks, John, good news. Reports, there are none. Ordinances, if the clerk could please give ordinance 2377, first reading by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for health insurance coverage for the employees of the City of Ironton and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob.
I'd like to suspend the rules, give ordinance 2377, second, third reading, all together, and we did give a favorable recommendation by the.
Thank you. Jacob.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
If the clerk could please give ordinance 2377, second and third reading by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for health insurance coverage for the employees of the City of Ironton and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for health insurance coverage and the employees of the City of Ironton and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob.
I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 2377.
Let's start Jacob first. Jacob.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Ordinance 2377 is adopted. If the clerk could please give reading to ordinance, first reading to ordinance 2378 by title only.
Authorizing establishing a City of Ironton tree commission and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Is that something we need tonight? Ralph? Yes. Bob.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and give ordinance 2378, second, third reading by title, all.
Jacob.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
If the clerk could please give ordinance 2378, second and third reading by title only.
Authorizing establishing a City of Ironton tree commission and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing establishing a City of Ironton tree commission and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob.
Make a motion we adopt 2378.
Jacob.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Ordinance 2378 is adopted. If the clerk could please give ordinance 2374, second reading by title.
Establishing rates for the rental property in the Ironton City Center and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Councilman.
First reading, that this be given three readings, but also just make mention that he expressed a strong desire to vote no on it as currently is, so I'd like for us to try between this meeting and next meeting to maybe talk about escalating or doing something to get to a yes, but if you're still no, it's fine.
Bob.
Like to say that, I would like to, if we could amend it so that we're not, I may renew in a year, we just do what, raise it now, and then we'll look at it again next December, September, again, but I would support that, but it's been a long time since anybody had raises, and the first year raises might be a little hard to swallow, but I think it needs to be done.
Okay. Nate, you have a hear note?
No, I just want to have three separate readings also.
Okay. Anybody else? Discussion? Okay. Thanks, Bob. Make sure we have the original, so that we can amend it next meeting. Resolutions, if the clerk could please give resolution 2379, reading by title only.
Resolution authorizing the submission of an application for Ohio Urban Forestry Grant under the Inflation Reduction Act program.
Bob.
I'll make a motion to pass for resolution 2379.
Haney.
Sorry.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Resolution 2379 passes. The clerk could please give ordinance 2380, can I say ordinance, resolution 2380, reading by title only.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for accept and enter into a water supply revolving loan account, WSRLA agreement on behalf of the City of Ironton for planning, design, indoor construction, a third street water line improvement, and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring emergency.
Bob.
This was given a favorable recommendation by the Finance Committee, and I'd like to make a motion to pass 238.
Perry.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Resolution 2380 passes. Thanks, Councilman.
Maybe make more.
Go with Mary.
No tigers. Yeah.
Moving back to audience participation, if you'd like to address the Ironton City Council this evening, we first have an invited guest, Mr. Ralph Klein from the CAO, to give us an update on grants, et cetera, and then you're free to address the Ironton City Council, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Ralph Klein, CAO, 411 South Cliff Street. I appreciate you passing the resolutions and things, I can talk to you a little bit about for, you know, the tree commission is a part, one of the things that they require for this urban forestry grant application, and basically the Ironton and Bloom, I think many of you have talked before, Ironton and Bloom kind of filled that role before and are looking to continue to support, and we've been trying to work, to kind of find people who might recommend to the mayor to put on that tree commission, so we'd like to have somebody from the city council, whatever, here, if there is an interest. We've got a few other names and things like that, that we'll try to work with, you know, the mayor for doing that, so. Again, it's an advisory group, it advises the city, it would also be a group that would be there to work with businesses as well as residences in the city, you know, trying to get the tree canopies and the right kind of trees planted in the right places and things, you know, we've been working with that, some in the downtown shop lane, and we're making some progress there and things, so, with that, so. The urban forestry grant, or tree grant, or whatever, that we're looking at, we could buy up to half a million dollars, it's a four-year program, so, that sounds like a lot of money, but you're looking at a four-year program, and under that program, we're looking at, your primary thing has to be planting trees and reestablishing tree canopies and that kind of thing, so, you know, we are proposing to continue our work in the downtown area where we've not been able to replace certain trees and dead trees and so on, but the other thing we're looking at are your downtown, your entrances, I know the city is looking at all some things with the roundabouts, the bridges, and that kind of thing, we think that we could make that kind of a priority area. We have to make it a priority area, investments in disadvantaged neighborhoods, which basically that's every neighborhood in the city except for one between Spruce and Pleasant, I believe is not qualified, so. But we were also looking at the South Ironton entrance, you know, where you're going to be redoing South Third Street, or potentially down in North Ironton, where you're reconstructing all those streets, there might be some opportunities to do some things there with that. With it, there's dollars that can be utilized for maintenance of trees, you know, trimming and that kind of thing, and so we're trying to work around to see if we can come up with an annual program to kind of go out, you know, I know you guys get complaints all the time, well, trees blocking the stop sign, or whatever, so, so that we can get into that, not only that, or dying trees, and those type of things. And then one other thing would be to kind of work with our neighborhoods and things, and again, you know, recommending the appropriate types of trees, you know, that things are not going to cause leaf problems and that kind of stuff, so. Part of our challenge, which we might be able to work with this program, and it's due at the end of the year here, so, we've been kind of working with solid waste district to see if somehow we can help, maybe can't buy equipment, but we might be able to lease equipment and help with some expenses of the city, taking their yard and that kind of thing, and getting it in and get it recycled, so. I don't want to promise anything on that, but we think we may have a way of leasing equipment for four years, whatever, so, so that's kind of in that, and that's.
Ralph, I think Bob either wants to volunteer for the tree commission, has a question, or both.
I think raising a hand means he volunteers.
That's what I thought. That was my assumption as well.
I mean, your tree's at the cemetery.
Yeah.
I was part of this tree thing they had maybe six or eight years ago, 10 years ago, where they went around, they'd plant tree specific in different areas, like I know in front of St. Lawrence, there was two or three, and then somebody come along and cut them down.
Well, St. Lawrence, the St. Lawrence, there are some different species that are planted in the tree lines, we have planted some of the others over there, what you saw that had to be removed were.
Well, not talking about the big trees, that, I hated that too, but some of the trees that we dedicated in a group of us, and downtown, I mean, downtown merchants just got started tearing and cutting them all down.
Yeah.
And you know, those were, I think they were bought with the grant a long time ago.
Yeah.
So we don't have somebody on this that's going, rules and regulations, if you want a tree, here's what goes, and if you want to cut one down, you have to go through the same process in reverse.
That would probably have to be up to council if they want to give that authority to something like the tree commission, and it would require, I guess, kind of like permitting and things like you would have to do for your sidewalk replacements and that kind of thing.
Yep.
You know, at the present time, as proposed, it would be, we work more on an advisory voluntary and trying to work ahead of time and things with individuals, and a lot of times, we've been able to get them to come through, and some of the issues that we've seen downtown, they have now come, some are biggest supporters, so, after working with them, so. But yeah, I know, we've went through the whole thing with the berries cropping and merchants, and yeah, so, and again, the information and recommendations and things like that, as far as maintaining your urban canopy and things, has changed a lot from back in our days, back in the 1980s and things, you don't go plant Bradford pears throughout the whole town, or whatever, you look for diversity, you look for how they fit, you know, what trees fit, you know, utility lines in front of bondings and down the line, so that's kind of what we've been approaching and things in the past, so. So anyhow, we hope it's a good opportunity and things.
I think it will be, I've kind of read over, looked at it, I just want to make sure that we're not, so this effort is something that's two, three years from now that we'll cut them down, change all of this.
Well, that may be something, if the city sees that as a thing, then you may want to enhance it, I know some communities, they do require permits to get trees planted or cut or whatever, and if that's something that the city wouldn't entertain, we could maybe investigate some of the other communities that have done that, how they've implemented it and things, and come back with some recommendations for you.
Is there going to be any at-large people, you said the city council member, probably you, any citizens at large?
Yeah, we're looking, we've had a couple, Carol Allen is one that has worked, you know, hired down, you know, from the Ironton and Bloom standpoint, Mike Pierce here, a former council person, indicated that he would be willing to serve on it and things, so, and I think we got a list of like five or six other people, so, we were going to present those to the mayor, and then the mayor can appoint them, so, but you know, I think having somebody on council would be good, that way you can be the person going back and forth.
I'd go in turn.
You do?
I will.
Okay.
I'll second. Roll call, are all in favor?
I appreciate that, Bob, so, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Perry.
You said it sort of joking, I was going to actually suggest seriously that you consider, I mean, it's got to be one of the things you do on the cemetery board anyway, I mean, in terms of trees and type, so, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
I was just, I think we need a little more control of it.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think we don't want at the high school, we don't want to, St. Lawrence, we don't want, you know, I think in the action, you know, Fifth, North Fifth, I think we've planted one there, I think, but we planted several trees over and above what the downtown revitalization grant paid for, all the trees in the cyclones.
Yeah, we had, we had a couple that have, which maintenance is another issue that we've got to deal with this too, but the one thing that they have ran into at school are the new security issues, to make sure there's nothing that people. We had to remove a lot of shrubberies and stuff like that, and want to do that, and I'd say your other schools are running into some of the same issues.
There are.
I know you just didn't come to us with a horticulture update, so you can move on to whatever else you got for us.
Okay. Long report that the ACGP, the Appalachia Community Grant Program, the governor's infamous half a billion dollar project that he's doing with Appalachia, we submit. I believe, so we met the deadline, so. It turned out, I mean, in this one, Ironton, our CAO's taken to be what they call lead applicant, it was a large application, about $111 million passed, we know we won't get all that, but that was our program, it ended up that there's probably 30-plus communities, slash entities that wanted to join our partnership and things, and some of those were. Things to do it, and with that program, the focus is to develop the infrastructure and resources for travel tourism industry, you know, something that we've started, you know, with the Gateway Center here, and with hotels, and we've been kind of, and that's gave us the leg up on it and things, and then we have actually formed a very strong partnership that, you know, we meet bi-weekly and things, of all these communities, river communities, and our particular kind related around the river and the way, the forest, open lands, and that type of thing. We have communities going from New Richmond, near Cincinnati, all the way up to Tuscarawas and Belmond County and things like that, again, a lot of those were investments along the river and the development downtowns. The idea is to make open space available to meet the demands, post-COVID demands for travel tourism as well as your local communities, you have to relate all this to COVID, plus the second thing would be to provide infrastructure for amenities for the new age workforce, people working remotely, and we're finding here in Ironton, that I think the last two houses that we rehabbed, and so were people that chose to move here to work remotely, one from New Jersey and moving their parents and all that good stuff, so, so we feel that that is a strong market to be able to attract and retain our young professionals and so on, and so these amenities would be here. For the city in particular, you know, our large outdoor regional, the Gateway Regional Outdoor Complex was submitted into it, it's just right under a hundred million dollar project, we have the Trail Connector going from that to Railroad Street here in town, we had riverfront improvements included in that, those that did not require a full core permit because don't think we can get permits in time. To do, you know, the Marina Wall, we may not be able to do because that's going to probably require a full permit, and so we'd be looking for other funds on that part. We were also able to put in the completion of the Rovene Theater to, to its final state, hopefully, so. So those are projects specifically here in Ironton, we have other ones in the county and all the way up and down the river, hopefully, we are to hear from that, probably, we're speculating sometime in January, because I think the state's intent is to take those projects to the controlling board meeting in February and get a final approval so they can get them under grant agreement. These projects have to be on contract by October of this year, construction contract, and they have to be completed by October 2026. Very aggressive, and we have to somehow be able to manage those, so we're looking at some different models for some construction management, with type bidding and some things like that, that the state's working with us on, you know, in order to do that, so. I think we're positive as far as getting funding, how much, and what for, we don't know.
Another question for you, Ralph, you may not be able to answer because of confidentiality, but is things starting to move out of the sports complex area because I heard that they have done a water test flow to make sure they had enough water and do something.
It's running at high speed, Bob. All the property that is needed, required for the project has been acquired, where our city and county and our different development organizations have partnered, so all property that we have to have is secured, there are those properties that might enhance, especially if, you know, individuals want to sell their property, you know, we look at long-term, engineers have been out there, we've had endangered species and studies, walking and all, we're working right now to try to get core drillings with it, so, yeah, we have basically four engineering professional groups working in partnership with it, part of them is looking at the hardcore earthmoving and bridges and, you know, that kind of thing, parts looking at the facilities, construction part of it, from the sports portion of it, part of it's from the landscaping thing, so, yeah, there's lots going on at that point in time, so. And then, if we can, once we know where we stand with the state, I would probably like to have a work session, you know, with the community and that kind of thing, to kind of go through what we pretty sure we have at that point with it, yeah, it's pretty exciting, so. One other thing, the Capitol bill, you probably have heard, again, these are the ARPA dollars, I can't even remember what ARPA stands for anymore, so, COVID-related, they allocated 700 million between House members and State Senate members on that, the House is asking for requests next Monday, and we were able to put together, you know, as more of the county and the city and different organizations' proposal that would hopefully have the indoor complex portion of that with it. The other ACGP dollars cannot be used for indoor facilities, had to be all outdoor and that kind of thing, so, so hopefully, we'll see where that goes, and, you know, to be hopefully competing on that, so. Couple other things just to throw out there, where we're working, the county got ground filled at demolition dollars, we're working with the land bank on the demolition, which is more your residential and non-dirty commercial, the ground field is to do cleanup and things along those lines, so if you have properties out there identified, please get that information to us. Land Bank is trying to focus on the residential, and LA DC is working on the ground field, I know we had a lot of studies that were completed, environmental studies completed under the federal ground field program that we got out there, so, so that is out there. I think the things have to be entered in February, January, somewhere through there, so, so our office is working with Land Bank to get some of those in LA DC, so, so if you have particular properties or whatever, and you know, some that we've seen, you know, we're trying to target, and sometimes it's going to be a matter of getting the property owners to just pay and that kind of thing, so. Trying to think. There's other things out there, too. There's a lead-based paint thing that we're kind of looking at to construct, that's from the county that came down, and by understanding, I think there's still $2 billion worth of ARPA dollars that the state hasn't allocated yet, so.
Is that for individual residences, Ralph, or is that for like community buildings?
The lead-based paint you're talking about?
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, for individual residential properties as well as they have a list of community buildings, uh, like daycares and things, I guess that, you know, where you would have, uh, children exposed and those types of things. Um, so if there are some facilities or whatever out there that you know of, then again, let us know on that. We would try to pursue those. Uh, we we think we can come up with several residential units where we go through and do weatherization on homes and some minor home repairs. And a lot of times you'll find that you'll have lead painted windows that need to be replaced or doors. And so we're thinking we can identify several units that way.
Chris. So for instance, the ten news building, that that might be a target. The 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 grand, uh, lead base paint research.
Yeah.
The Grand Theater, fourth floor here, different things that have not been evaluated for decades.
Um, well, if you have lists, give to us and we'll see if they they put in the things. So. Uh, any other questions, guys?
Nate, nothing? All right. Nate, thanks, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
Hi.
How you doing? My name is William Edwards. I live at two two oh two Park Avenue, apartment seven oh seven. I'm here with a complaint to the CAO. I've been put in harm's way the last two weeks. My elevator's been out. I live on the seventh floor. I take physical therapy twice a week. I can't get to it because I can't make them stairs. I ride usually a scooter around here in town all the time. But what my problem is, is CAO.
Which building, which building do you live in?
Excuse me?
Which building do you live in?
That one right across the street from you on the corner. Martin House, used to be. And the thing of it is, they they called, let's see, the first of these ever. It busted at two thirty in the morning. It didn't bust. They got a nut that lives there that went off and took his something. And the sprinkler system is a good fifteen feet up in the air in those rooms. He took something and knocked it off. It flooded the third floor. The third floor flooded. It went down the elevator, shorted out the elevator and flooded the second floor and the floor below it. Now, I when I asked Mr. Henderson, you understand, well, his person that was there at the building. I asked him that morning, Friday morning, I had a funeral to go to at nine o'clock. And I asked him, well, when will it be done? Well, they're they'll be here any 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 time now and we'll see about it. I got home at four thirty. Uh, there was an elderly couple that was sitting in there in the lobby and I was talking to him. I said, well, what's the problem? He said, I can't get up to my room. I said, uh, if you can't get up to your room, and he she was on a walker and he was barely walking. And I said, okay. I said, now, this is the best thing I can think of for you to do. Go get a hotel room. Pay for it. And when you go to give these people their rent, tack it on there. And take your money and then attack the bill on the rent receipt or the rent. Well, I said, now, you can do that. And I said, I hope you, you know, if you're able to. But then they come and said that it would be fixed on Tuesday. And I, when I got back at four thirty, and I said, why, they wasn't here today? Uh, yes, but they had to order something, to order this. I said, no, I just told her straight out, you're lying. I said, I'm in a senior citizen building. You are putting me in harm's way. In other words, if something happens, I've got a, I've got a button on right now. If I should fall somewhere going between here and my building, I'll push that button. It automatically, they know where I'm at and they'll come. Out or do anything. But I want to know who regulates CCAO.
So first of all, Mr. Edwards, is your, is your elevator fixed?
Excuse me? No.
It's still not fixed?
It just went, oh, it was out for a week, almost a whole week. It just went out yesterday. You know what happened yesterday? The washer overloaded and it ran down the elevator shaft. And I guess it shorted it out again.
I can't speak to who owns that, honestly. I I I don't know. Um, but a commercial building, the city does not regulate the, a commercial building. That's done by the state.
It's done by the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that means I have to go to, go to Columbus or in there then?
I I would start with the commissioners, maybe.
Excuse me?
I would start with the commissioners rather than than trying to find a state agency. Um, they may be able to escalate it a lot faster than than we could.
Okay, okay, I got another thing. Now, that's just for the building being flooded. I mean, being not able to get up and down to my, uh, floor. But I got another thing. I'm on my scooter. I get in the elevator. I'm on the seventh floor. I go down, I'm on my way down. This knucklehead and his wife gets on at the fourth floor. I think they were there visiting their mother or grandmother or somebody. And I turned and asked them, I said, what floor are you going? And they, I'm going down to one. And he pulled his shirt back like that to let me see that he was carrying. You understand?
I do.
What's the rules on bringing a pistol in a senior citizen building? Who's going to bother him in a senior citizen building?
Depends on if he has a concealed carry permit. But but Mr. Edwards, your your time is up. Um, is there anything else that the city can do? Because we can't, we we can't fix your elevator at Park Avenue Apartments. I I.
I'm not asking you.
I'm not un.
I'm asking you to get on CAO.
I don't know that.
Mr. Uh, what's his name, Henderson?
I don't know that that's who owns it.
Mr. Henderson is the one that runs where I'm at?
Do any of you all know?
I think it is, as I said, Ron Henderson is the property manager and that's probably.
He's over all the properties he has.
That that's, I feel like that's who you need to take your issues up with, Mr. Henderson.
No, he is two-faced. And I told him to his face, I'm not just saying it, you understand? Just to think that I'm I'm somebody, but I'm nobody. But I don't like to be lied to. And I'll stand my ground when it, when they got to coming to me and tell me a lie. And they told me a lie. And I told Mr. Henderson he's a liar. I asked him about about posting a sign outside the door. This is a senior citizen facility. No weapons should be allowed here. He said, well, we can do that. No, that'd been three months ago. It still ain't been done. You understand? That's why when you talk to somebody, you know, you, you know, they just blow you off. I'm not in the being in the blown off mood. The man, and like I told Mr. Henderson, it's, I gave my weapons to my brother and then he take them out to his house. But if I got to come in here and somebody's got, uh, because they got a concealed weapon carry, then I'm going to go get my stuff and I'm putting it back in because I'm not going to be naked for some knucklehead.
Mr. Edwards, I think we've devolved into into something we can't help you with. So your time is up. I'll ask you to have a seat and you can come back and update us if you, nothing's done, but, um.
Ain't no says updating, ain't nothing you can do. Thank you.
Any others that would like to address the Ironton City Council this evening? Our mayor is ill. Um, he sent me a message that he is ill, so there's, um, no mayor's report other than he's ill this evening. Um, moving along to miscellaneous, I know Mr. Klein has a couple of things, but also wants to be last because he has a executive session regarding real estate and some other things. So, um, anybody else with miscellaneous? Nate?
Okay, I had two items. Uh, they both were related to the, uh, issue one that just passed, legalizing marijuana. Uh, I had some concerns from residents asking if, uh, marijuana marijuana-related businesses, uh, such as growhouses, growhouses and dispensaries would be allowed in residential areas, uh, for, for I. So I just kind of want to get some feedback from you guys. Just want to ask an opinion from our solicitors and see if there's anything in our current code that would prohibit that. And if there is a big thing to prohibit that, I would like to see that implemented, that it would only be in, uh, business business zones. So I just kind of wanted to get some feedback before I send that, that, try to get something going. Because I think that's going to be something that's going to be a little pretty, pretty quick. Any disagreement with that or?
I think we probably need to find out the legality, so, because we don't know what they're, what they're saying. There's, it might say anywhere in the city, or the city, Port Hope or wherever.
I'll I'll tell you the legalities of it. There's two different bills in in the Ohio Senate right now, and neither one of them has passed. So we as citizens passed, um, in Ohio, we passed to legalize it and tax it. But there's been no guide, it's it's, um, there's no guardrails around it right now because the the Ohio State, um, Senate and House has not done anything to put guardrails around it. So right, right now, to Nate's point, it's kind of the wild, wild west. And if, I I feel like we should be proactive like Nate's suggesting and maybe get an opinion. Is this something that, I mean, it it is a business unless you're growing it with your tomatoes and your six plants out there, that's probably not a problem. But if you have a whole greenhouse and garage, then you probably need to have a business district kind of thing. But, um, so I I don't think it would hurt us to be proactive. And then if, then when the Ohio Legislature does enact something, it will supersede whatever we enact unless it, if it conflicts. So.
And that, and that, that was my, one of the biggest concern I heard, but they just don't want dispensary popping up next door to their house on whatever. It's like they wouldn't want a funeral popping up next to their house and, you know, art or what, you know. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that that's allowed.
Chris.
Hi. One of the residents in town asked or said they heard that, uh, the dispensary was looking to purchase weapons for the various. So, well, I can't really speak to it, but it addresses this very thing that they've talked about.
So, yeah, I just, I want to get an opinion from them and see if there's something already in it or not, move forward with, with essential. Uh, and the second part related to the marijuana, uh, issue was how the tax revenue would be shared. Like Craig said, there's two different versions, uh, one in the House, one in the Senate. And I I don't think I've seen either one of them that has, uh, a local revenue share with municipalities. They'll, and it's, I think, uh, most progress was fifteen percent to the state with the county to have a three percent option on top of it. Again, nothing for municipalities. So I would like to, uh, ask for Anderson's draft, the resolution encouraging revenue sharing, uh, with municipalities, uh, especially for those that, uh, have dispensaries or other marijuana-related businesses located, located in there and send those to our, uh, our representatives.
And to take that one step further, I I suggested, um, that we, the two sponsors of those two bills, that we send them a copy of that resolution certified letter. So at least the the drafters of those two bills realize that they omitted municipalities, probably an oversight on their part. But, um, nonetheless, we'll make sure that they realize it was an oversight on their part.
Chris?
Okay.
Okay. Jacob?
I'm co-sponsor of that legislation.
Okay.
I'd be happy to sponsor the resolution as well.
Okay.
I would be happy to join in on that as well.
Me too.
There, you want to make a vote?
Yeah, I'm sure you'll have a full house. I think anybody would disagree with that.
Okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session, discuss personnel and property with council and finance director, then I can follow.
Perry, second. Roll call, please.
Graham.
Hi.
Larry.
Todd.
Nathan. Harvey.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.